General Council meeting of the Monday 27th of July, it's now 5:30. We don't have any apologies. Council acknowledge and pay respects to the Tasmanian Aboriginal community as being traditional and regional as the continuing custodians of this land. All persons in attendance to advise that its council policy to the court council meetings in accordance with council's digital recording policy. The digital recording of this meeting will be made available to the public on council's website for a minimum period of six months. And just a reminder that we are live standing as well as standing. Members of the public in attendance at the meeting who do not wish for their words to be recorded and/or published on the website should contact the relevant council officer and advise of the issues prior to start of the meeting. Here and I have all of the questions here, you know, I'm assuming that those people are happy to have those recorded. So said, there are no apologies. Item two is declarations of interest. And I have a declaration from Councilor Alexia in item 5.5. And Councilor Ennis, thank you. Councilor Milburn and Councilor Milburn. As well as 3.2.2, 3.2.3 and 8.2. Thank you. Are there any other declarations of interest in any item on this agenda? No, thank you. Item three is procedural. Item 3.1.1 is confirmation of the minutes of the council meeting of the 22nd of June. Do I have a move, please?
So moved.
Mr. Lecock, do I have anything else? Councilor Milburn, Councilor Lecock?
Nothing to add then.
Councilor Milburn, nothing here. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Lecock to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? Motion's carried in endlessly. Item 3.2 is public question time. Item 3.2.1 is responses to questions raised at prior meetings and all of those questions were answered within that meeting time. So there are no responses to report. Item 3.2.2 is questions on notice from the public. And we have several listed there. And we ask for a move of the recommendation to close.
So moved.
Councilor Henry. Second there.
Second.
Councilor Murphy, thank you. Councilor Perry?
Uh, can you add, can you hear?
Councilor Murphy.
Nothing further.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Perry to close.
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Those against? Motion's carried in endlessly. Item 3.2.3 is questions on notice from the public. And we do have several here. This is from my Christopher Mills at 52 Caroline Street, Esselford. Land at 54 Caroline Street. Question one. At the council meeting on the 22nd of June, the general manager stated that he had always accepted and understood the landslide classification noted by the state government's Department of Prime and Industry, Parks, Sport and Environment. As I have recently assisted Mr Atkins by providing an opinion on the current means to the resources that the landslide zone at 54 Caroline Street project is largely within medium or medium active landslide hazard band. Is this the landslide classification for the landslide zone at 54 Caroline Street that Mr Atkins now accepts? Question two is Mr Atkins qualified geotechn engineer. And question three, are there any accredited geotechn engineers on council staff? Mr Atkins.
It looks through there. Would council accept the land classification and the state government tribute to that public piece of land? We've never disputed that. No, I'm not a geotechnical engineer. And no, council do not have any geotechnical engineers on staff. Thank you.
Thank you. From Bob Delacott and Levencock applies Denport. Transparency and compliance. Question one. I refer to council's response in this evening's agenda to my question on notice one B, which I asked about Probable Place. Due to the fact that in many instances, tenants and owners would be in open competition with existing unsubsidised rate paying businesses in the city, did council at that time take into consideration the requirements of the state economic regulator, the Australian Competition and Consumer Commission and ramifications for non-compliance of not only the actual regulations, but also the intent of the requirements? And question D, council did take into consideration the above mentioned aspects where all decisions made based on advice from a qualified person and if so, who specifically gave that advice? Council's response for question one D was all council resolutions are considered with the proviso of qualified advice as required under section 65 of the Local Government Act. Now, I believe the response was somewhat basic, so I again ask that part of my question one D as above was specifically gave that advice. In other words, pleased many persons or persons were qualified to be able to give the advice that the agreements and subsidies in regard to Probable Place comply with the requirements of the state economic regulator and the Australian Competition and Consumer Commission. My response to that is that the general manager is responsible for all professional advice provided to council. He ultimately is responsible for all of that report to each council member. Feral pigeons problem, this is still from Mr Delacott. Question two, refer to my questions on notice sent on the 7th of July about the most unsatisfactory ongoing problem of the feral pigeons nesting directly above the park pavement in front of the notable street shop and on council property. On the main specific concern was the noise and mess of pigeon exposure and whilst taking of the newly constructed unsealed pavement that confronts pedestrians and businesspeople, which is to be dealt with and also for other business owners who in that vicinity who have had to tolerate some four years or more of construction work by council and others virtually on their doorstep. With little appears consideration and assistance given by council. Further in my letter of the 7th, I respectfully requested that immediate attention given by council to the problem. As I said then 25th of July, no action has been taken to actually clean up this file under the years of council's prime footpath. So much positive pride as all very... Sorry. It is all very well council to say, as per your response in this evening's agenda, that you are following down this issue with the property owner. As this apart from discussing looking for image for the city is a health issue, why is it not reasonable to expect council to have this cleaned up immediately? For your information, I've tended again, information pertinent to the main problems included in particular O action is caused by feral pigeons. And I note again, council takes workplace health and safety very seriously. If council is short of funds, I would personally provide some money to assist in the cleaning. My response to that is that until tonight's meeting, the response hadn't been endorsed by council to Mr Delacott and it now has been. And included in that is a copy of a fairly extensive report that was completed some time ago. And I do note that as I have understood from the general manager that we are working with the army of that property as well. A letter from Douglas Jamie, 23 Watkins, is in Denport. At the 23rd of March meeting, I raised the illegal parking in Wright Street and the answer dated the 31st of March that nothing would happen. The articles in the advocate on the 23rd and 24th show that the government has pushed arrival of new ferries further back and starting refresh on design and construction. That being so, then the council needs to get rid of the illegal parking fourth wheel immediately. Some possibilities are one, remove the cycle tracks on both sides of Wright Street, widen the footpath on the east side of Wright Street and make a two-way footpath cycleway. Two, remove the cycle tracks on both sides of Wright Street and relocate to Tarrton Street. Three, remove the cycle tracks on both sides of Wright Street and do nothing else. Whatever council does in the short term and for the long term should be at Tesports cost. Question one, what and when will council now take the necessary action? Mr Atkins.
Yeah, through you ma'am. But at this point, council doesn't expect the delivery timeframe, the spur of the impact on this Denport freeway project. Discussions regarding the project are continuing with Tesports. This includes changes to the road network to improve parking and other poor traffic issues which exist.
Thank you. Question two, when will the hard copy and the online copy of the agenda have the same page numbers? Mr Atkins.
Yeah, thank you for raising this issue. We've just recently updated our agenda software. You may notice there's some changes to the presentation and the formatting of the agenda. We're currently looking at options to ensure the numbering is consistent for future agendas. At least by way of background, the difference in numbering is a result of the hard copy not including the attachments previously in process involved in time consuming workaround to align the numbering, which we would prefer not to replicate. Currently working through that.
Thank you. Let us... Questions from Mr Malcolm Gallow with a form of a by my driver by data. Question one. I ask the following question as reported on page six of the current agenda with reference to the advocate article tri titled A Try and Update at the 3rd of the 7th, 2020. Where recorded that Milburn said he previously paid $60,000 to ex Probable Place headless Lee Grant Hurst and Mr Hurst paid Milburn $5,000 a month, then $60,000 a year marketing fee to promote their date on his TV shows. Does council categorically deny that $5,000 a month marketing fee was not a reimbursable or deductible amount provided to Probable Place or Mr Grant Hurst by council? The response in the agenda is yes, correct, council was not involved in the mounted arrangement. In part, due to the way I worded the question, I see clarification as to the response, yes, correct, is actually refugiation that the noted marketing fee was a cash or income reimbursement amount in favour of him being doing all Mr Hurst note. I didn't ask if council was involved in the arrangement, just was the marketing fee reimbursable? And I can confirm council did not pay the marketing fee and did not reimburse the fee. Question two. Council has confirmed on page seven of the current agenda that the square meters of the land sold as lot one for the Monterey waterfront hotel development was 2,340 square meters for a sale price of $1.298 million including GST. The initially agreed square meter sold as lot one was 2,315 square meters and the confirmed final square meters sold for the same $1.118 million is 2,340 square meters. Accordingly, my question is, was the additional 33 square meters sold and valued at $16,797 based on the initial square meter rate or as council likes to state as the sale price $18,503 including GST and included as an additional area of land acquisition at no extra cost considered and approved by councillors? My response to that is that council approved the sale of lot one for the agreed price, undertaking a final survey as part of subdivision as normal practice and did not require any additional council approval. Question three. I ask as question 11 on page eight of the current agenda, will council please confirm if Denport City Council itself supports the submission from the GAT in relation to the legislating of the eight good governance principles? With the response being council is not required to endorse or approve submissions made by the GAT and has not specifically considered the submission to the report. However, the response is not to the question asked and I'll send the following amended question. Will council please confirm if Denport City Council itself supports the submission from the GAT in that the eight good governance principles remain as what are in effect unenforceable guidelines only and not be legislated within the Local Government Act and linked to the behaviours of the council's code conduct? Not. Perhaps the DCC representative to the GAT can respond as to why the supporting statement to the GAT submission included it was mostly supported by the sector, although in general by the GAT members that it would be sufficient to maintain these principles as guidelines. And here's the question to council. That stated in our previous response, which was tabbed earlier. Council did not specifically consider the submission or the particular point to which we refer. Therefore, council, as council does not have a position on the question we raised. However, I would refer to item 5.3 on tonight's agenda where council will be considering a full treatment new risk governance related initiatives beyond council's statutory obligations. Excuse me, I may take it. Question from Mr Robbie Russell, 225 Steel Street, Denport. Item eight on the case session number 8.6, 17th into my lease agreement question. Then council can have the address of the business name, could you have the name of the business also named to better and have us to know who you're dealing with? Mr General Manager?
Yeah, through you ma'am. The lease is with DS of Kowicka Park in it, which is a spotlight group.
Thank you. Could you put that on? No, I'm sorry.
Does... The question two, does Denport City Council record incoming phone calls to its receptionist? And why not? General Manager?
Yeah, council doesn't record incoming telephone calls and doesn't consider it necessary to do so.
Thank you. And Mr Russell's third question. Victory Avenue, Holman Street and Stewart Street reconstruction. Did Denport City Council increase the width of these roads?
No, through you ma'am. None of those three roads were increased in width. Holman Street and Victory Avenue remained the same width and Stewart Street was actually there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Question from Jenny Clare, 571 St Denport. Through the information that has been revealed in answers to questions at the June 2020 council meeting where now known delegation authority beyond the normal practice was given to the general manager, Mr Atkins, under the state of emergency which was declared due to the COVID-19 pandemic. The reason given for this was that council would not be able to prove DA's in the required time frames unless the normal laws for delegation was set aside. The consequence was that development application for 27 house lots, which is part of a larger development targeting 76 house lots and two commercial lots was passed without any input before the planning authority committee or immediate council. The normal practice is that delegation cannot take place if the representation has been received regarding the application. There was one representation in relation to the Brent Street development. So normal practice was also set aside in relation to that. So allow our councillors, to their credit, did not visit any one council meeting. This DA was not put before them as they had delegated authority to the GM at item 9.2 of the March council meeting. This is concerning as this is a big development requiring a term of known push and potentially endangered species habitat. Question one. When a DA goes before a council or committee meeting, it is included in the minutes of that meeting. As the Brent Street DA is not included in an agenda, this is not accessible to the public on the council website. I have been advised by the general manager that if I was to see this application, I would need to submit a right to information request. At present, the time taken for RTI requests to be processed is around 600 days. Such a request also involves a fee. This means that due to the extra delegation given to the GM due to COVID-19, the DA for this project cannot in effect be viewed by the public. Yet if the DA had been treated in the normal manner, it would be easily accessible on the website. Mayor, are you and your councillors concerned that the details of such a large and important project are hidden from the public, especially if you and the council are into reckless transparency? Will you regret to find this situation and make the DA for the Brent Street development available to the public immediately? Question two. Then this question is for yourself and all other councillors individually. Were you and all our councillors aware that the DA for the Brent Street development had received exceptional treatment under the state of the mortalities powers invoked in response to COVID-19? Were you aware at the time that a representation had been received of this development and it was able to be passed by delegated authority? Are you and your councillors concerned? So lots of questions in mind. That the proper planning process has been bypassed for on what seems to be a questionable pretext. And question three. In an email to me dated June 11th, Mr Atkins stated that vegetation clearing impact on endangered species are matters outside of council's jurisdiction and are not part of the assessment process. Mayor, can you clarify if this is the correct procedure? Should the GM have taken into account when the land fell under the July 4th, 2019 Bends of Environment Protection and Biodiversity Conservation Act which prohibits the clearing of a persistently endangered and wholly protected community such as a black gum forest? Can you clarify whether the land in question is a black gum forest? And in response, I guess there's a couple of things. The development application which you referred was publicly advertised for two weeks as per statutory requirements. Council's comfortable with the delegation that will put in place to ensure timely process of applications and the general manager made councillors aware of the approval of the application. Council's confident all relevant planning issues were considered as part of the assessment and that the process was undertaken in accordance with council's requirements as a planning authority. I will point out that council was required to process RTI requests within 20 days, not 600 as suggested. And in addition to your questions, I can also confirm that clearing has occurred on the land to the north of the improved development site. And council is working with the relevant authorities and working through the issues with the developer to resolve that issue.
One word ma'am.
I think that's it.
If I may, just to see clarification in relation to that response with regard to having that information accessible on the council's website. So what we're saying is that it will require an RTI. Instead of a normal process, just a clarification, just so I understood the response, that was all.
Thank you. Pause.
Yeah, just to clarify, so when an application is submitted and it's made available for public comment, it obviously goes on our website. And this application did. However, now the permit's been issued, it's likely permit. If someone comes to council asking if someone else's permit's been approved, we have to respect that personal privacy and we direct them through an RTI request.
So it was on the website for the two weeks that it was probably in public comment?
So not necessarily attached? You could have it gone through a normal council process, it would have been attached to the agenda item? Yeah, through you ma'am. That's right, correct. But now that the permit's been issued, instead of using council's practice just to hand out legal permits on request from another member of the public. There's a statutory advertising period which was applied with and they were the opportunity during that period to make representation.
So do you want the agenda?
Yeah, that's... I suppose that's the clarifying point I'm trying to make is that if it had eventually put it on the agenda item as an agenda item brought forward council as per a normal council meeting, it would still be available on the website, the application, not the permit.
Okay. Yes, thank you. Oh, I have three questions on notice from councillors at the time of... Oh, thank you. Councilor Milburn, second. Apologies for that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item 3.3, these questions on notice from councillors at the time of compilation of the agenda, there were no questions on notice. Item 3.4 is notices of motion and item 3.4.1 standing the trees is a notice of motion of Councilor Lecock.
So moved then.
Second there.
Second.
Councilor Ennis, thank you. Councilor Miller.
Thank you ma'am. This really isn't over now, but I'll go through the process. You can read the motion then that I would like council to work with Denport, the Rotary Club of Denport North, the planting of more trees around our city. The club is very keen to plant more trees around the city and in particular around the perimeter of Bayard Park. They're happy to explore the possibility of grants that may be available to fund this type of initiative. They picture mainly attractive deciduous trees providing shady in summer, splash of colour in autumn and hopefully some sun in winter. The club's also happy to assist the council financially with these trees, tree guards, as well as assisting council staff with the planting. Council's always been supportive of the tree planting in our city. When I raised this back in 2005, all the elected members on council at that time and forward and still are most supportive of having more trees in our city planted. Took a few years, but after that we adopted a tree policy which is online for all our public to access. I know you know the benefits of the trees, but I've listed a couple. Trees, of course, add beauty and improve personal health and it's been proven that patients in hospitals and residing in aged care facilities that can see the green, the trees heal and recover a lot better than just looking out at a brick wall. Trees reduce air pollution, conserve water, reduce soil erosion, save energy, modify local climate increasing, economic stability, reduce noise pollution and create wildlife and plant diversity. So I'll leave it for discussion and see what my colleagues come up with. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Ennis?
Thank you. Just an opportunity for council to partner with another interested group in making our city a better place to live. And I strongly agree with it.
Thank you. Councilor Hollister?
Yes, I support this. Most people will realise that St Brendan's College Hall has been planted out of its trees. And I believe this was done by the Rotary Club. And I think that's a very good example of what they ought to do. The pain's got a look at the housing and movement around Bayard Park. It's been done in the past, it should be all right. So usually if we place trees in parks and reserves, it takes about 30 to 40 years for a tree to get matured. So paying a lot, this is very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Perry?
Thanks, Senator Mealy. I support all the previous speakers. Yeah, it's commonly known that the Rotary Club of Denport North support a lot of activities in our community of always looking for good projects to become involved in. This is not an exception. And I think on top of that, their officers' comments are a way to that particular point. So I think it's a good idea and let's get on with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? So, Councilor Milburn?
Thank you ma'am. Yes. I congratulate Councilor Lecock in reading to the council of all that we alone need to beautifying an area that can be seen barren at times. And I think the colour changes throughout the seasons would most definitely add to the most picturesque landscape we have.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councilor Lecock to close?
Thank you ma'am. I thank the councillors for their comments. I'd like to take the opportunity though to thank Lee Titus from the Rotary Club because I was with him recently at your councillor Ennis's little get together downstairs and we brought up, Lee brought up in that topic of trees once again. He's always had a passion for trees and that's been prompted by right back in 2005 to put forward a very similar motion on Meercroft Park. Unfortunately, it didn't get through council, but perhaps in the near future we can look at that again with the Rotary Club because it would be a beautiful splash of colour for our city. I think we've all travelled fairly well and when you fly and arrive in a city, what takes your eye? It's always the amount of trees that are planted. I'd also like to take the opportunity to thank a former alderman, Robin Green, who played a very important part in us getting a tree policy and working hard in the term as an alderman with us on getting our policy together. She did work very closely with staff for this to happen and it's good to see when we've got proactive aldermen like that that work with the general public, especially service clubs, in a positive way, what it can do for the community. So thank you to those people.
Thank you. I've got the motion. All those in favour, please say aye.
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 Any against? Motion's carried in endlessly. Item 4.1 Tasmanian planning screen scheme. It's probably screen, the screen. Draft, department, local provisions, schedule, representations received during the public exhibition period. There is a report on that advertising and...
So moved.
Thank you.
Second.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Well, this is just another step in an exhaustive process which is one I would put in kindly, I might add. And we just need to continue through the charade of progress there. I know the Burnie City Council is leading the way in Tasmania in terms of where we're at with this. In fact, Australia, which is not good news for us, let's be honest. We don't like to be second in Burnie anything, but good on Burnie City Council for advancing to that point. Okay, this is just another step in that process for us. I'm sure most councillors will forecast and will commend it and we move on. Thank you.
Thank you. I guess just remind everyone that our planners from across the coast, right across the coast, work very closely together on this project for another months, years now, so we're all working towards a long goal. Councillor Meehan.
Thank you, ma'am. Yeah, I agree with councillor Perry in relation to our neighbours, but anyhow. Having said that, I think there needs to be some knowledge in relation to Mark MacIver and the amount of work that he's put into delivering this particular project has been very a long and arduous task to do so and the fact that we have someone of that competency in the organisation to give credit to us moving forward. So looking forward to seeing this one get put to bed eventually and it'll be good to see Devonport move out of an interim party soon.
Thank you. Councillor Holst.
Yes, I'll forward this one very much. I've got about four A's and B's in my time that have never got past this stage for changes to state elections and put it off and change of governments have put it off. So I'll be very pleased to see it get through.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor John.
Thank you. Yeah, kudos to Mark MacIver for putting up with how many years he's been working on this and I think he's exhausted. And also I think we might not have beaten Burnie, but I think we're probably a bit more complicated than Burnie. It's not as clear cut and crystal on what we've been dealing with and I'd like to say I'm really proud of how this council's evolved. We've had certain ways, we've looked at things and we had a lot of consultancy in certain zones that are going to be one thing and we've had to change and relook at things and get them to become a different zone, even though there's been a big report on it saying it's got to be one thing and we've looked at another. I think that's something to be proud of. We're actually evolving and trying to do the best thing for the community as we go along. So going into the future, I think this is a really good section that we've put together and I think we've been very clever in not rushing because that makes us look like we're actually taking this very seriously and we want it to be something that the community and residents and rate payers can use down forward and make it easier for people when they're approaching planning. So well done to Mark MacIver's team and I look forward to becoming at least second to Burnie if we have to. Thank you.
Let's not get bogged down. Councillor Perry, your voice.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. My comment about the very much cutting check as we're friends on Burnie council and congratulations to them. And also acknowledge your work from our own, our own internal team, Mark MacIver, in getting it to this stage and as councillor John noted, the house has been very complex, quite up the vast range of areas that need tinkering and there's a lot of interest in some of the changes that were moved in and I guess that's why it's taken a bit longer some. So well done to everyone and I'll leave it at that. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a motion, always in favour, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Oh. I need to reverse and remind everyone that we were sitting as a planning authority when we made that, when we made that decision. I didn't make that announcement first. So we did sit as a planning authority and make that decision. So my apologies on it. I had the page here all set there. Thank you. Big staff for the remainder. Item 5.1 is the stormwater asset management plan. Do you want to move on the recommendation and adopt the plan for 2020 to 2023? So move.
Second.
Councillor Millstone.
Stormwater is probably one of those things that we all forget about underneath the earth, but obviously it's quite an expensive asset that we do need to maintain and we're looking for the recommendation discussion.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Nothing further, that's all in the report. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor Perry.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor. I do note that the swamp was endorsed by council consultation and it would hopefully back receive, so that, you know, I mean, that I was putting the dip out of the gap for a second. Thank you.
Thank you. Unfortunately, I haven't seen you. Any other comments, questions? Councillor O'Donnell, your voice. Your reference. Thank you. I've got a motion, always in favour, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.2, local rights and community infrastructure program. A report on... Probably that we've made available to us. Do you want to move on the recommendation, please?
So moved.
Councillor Perry.
Second.
Councillor Millstone, thank you. Councillor Perry.
Yeah, thanks, ma'am. Yeah, we discussed it at a workshop last week or two weeks prior to that. This was a good result for us. It's quite a good game, it's the opportunity for 71,000 dollars worth, or thereabouts, 506 in total, back into our Capital Works program that we actually took out that part of endorsing our budget because of COVID restrictions, COVID limitations that we put on place the ponies and I've had a half million dollars put back into that program thanks to the federal government. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor.
Yes, I agree with councillor Perry. It's a bit of a bonus really considering the economic times that we're all facing and to have that extra half a million dollars thrown back into our CapEx budget was a good fortuitous. So and there's some good projects there that would have well and truly have missed out. So having this funding is really...
Thank you. Councillor John.
Yeah, I've just got a question. Look, this is fantastic what we're watching and it's always good putting good money into valued projects in the area, but maybe a question through you to Mr. Skirby. How does this work? And I understand you've got to, your staff have got to have an idea of roughly how much this property is, each project's going to cost. So you put out a price, it's any winner. So how does it work when you know it's tender? We know how much we want to spend. How do we get best value for money from tenders if we've already got the price there?
Three, you may have certainly challenged from the sector in the estimates across our retired capital work program were available to the market in a transparent way. We certainly have capacity in terms of benchmarking projects against reasonable costs to ensure that we're providing value for money, but also there is still competition in the marketplace in terms of guarding those projects. The project budgets that are formulated are based off prior year's capital work program. So I'm confident that we have sufficient funds to progress, but it's certainly a requirement of the local government act that we manage our programming this way with the degree of transparency around cost allocation.
I suppose it hurts hard for you to get people to sharpen their pencils and us to get value for money like you would in a private business. We get criticised of that, but perhaps this is the problem with the process. We can't all, but we've got to be open and transparent, which I always like.
Yes, so through you, ma'am. Certainly we try and encourage competition in our projects, particularly at large scale projects and that the market's naturally attracted to those and certainly smaller projects, there's generally a smaller degree of interest.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
What comment if I may?
Councillor Holst.
Probably a good example of this is when Muscle Rock was done six, eight years ago. I think there was about five or six contractors putting quotes to do the work and I think council worked out that we could do it for about half a million less. So our own workers actually did the work and we're able to go half a million further with the development, otherwise wouldn't happen. So I think pencils can be sharpened, but there's a lot of work going on, which there is at the moment, and that with infrastructure projects, money coming from the various governments and ourselves. It's having to be aware of it. Maybe sometimes council workers can actually do a more economic job if the civil engineers have got too much work on and don't really want the job and put in a big price and hope they get it.
Thank you. Councillor Ennis.
Thank you. It's great to hear from Mr. Skirby, the words openness and transparency. It's fantastic because that's obviously a buzzword at the moment and it's good to hear.
Thank you. Councillor Meehan.
Yes, I think I may through you to Mr. Skirby. On the face of it, we're all just looking at it briefly. How many of these projects could potentially be conducted in-house? By the look, there could be a large percentage there for... Could actually benefit some way.
Through you, ma'am. Certainly another could and there already are a number of projects within our Capital Works program that will be delivered by in-house resources. But across operation and capital projects, quite typically we will do a significant amount of preparatory works in the Rose program space as well because we're particularly geared up for that work.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Perry, your voice.
Thanks, Madam Mayor. Thank you everyone for your contribution. Yeah, I agree with it on the budget, the idea that estimates are out there for all. So yeah, that's true, but I think the market takes care of that. So in fact, if you've got an example, you've got a $130,000 project and it's four contractors willing to take that project on and they know that the others are willing to take it on whilst demand comes to the line and that's how the market works. And why aren't we telling us that we didn't have a budget? So that's what they do and I'm sure the market takes care of it. Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a motion, always in favour, please stay on.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 5.3 is an important openness and transparency that back to this meeting. Do you want to move on?
So no.
Second.
Absolutely. Councillor John.
Yeah, obviously as councillor Ennis just said as a segue, as the catchphrase, the phrases that we use, we certainly don't do this lightly. It's great that we've brought it up and we're making it into an actual section that we talk about and we are going to be, you know, watching our peers and peers and making sure that we do things with good governance, still wanting to help people out there to want to bring business into Devonport. We certainly are going to be open and transparent as much as we can. We do understand there are times when we've got to be careful about what we're doing when it comes to confidentiality and I guess what we're trying to do is make sure that we don't just throw things behind closed doors just for the sake of it. We're going to be very careful going forward of how we go about that. And that's great. You know, the elephant's left the room, let's talk about it, make sure that everyone's aware that we're aware and we're going to do our utmost in peaking this at the forefront of our minds as we go forward. That's great. We had a workshop, that's councillor Murphio again, and we added item seven to this, which is a good thing to do. We had a good workshop on it, there was robust discussion. I think we've come up with a good compromise and that's going to work for most of us. Interesting, I have just been doing a course with aged care and it's amazing how open and transparent other industries are because they have to about complaints, about making sure that people are heard. And all industries want to improve. They ask for policies, procedures on that basis. So I think we're getting better at that. We need to remember that even though we're local government, we still work for the people, we're at the local level and we've got to look after people out there wanting to ask questions, wanting to know what's going on so that we've got nothing to hide. So I think going forward, this has made us a bit more clearer. It's not so money in the water and we're trying to do our best. And going forward, I think we're going to do a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Meehan.
Thank you, ma'am. I suppose this is something that in the short period of time that I've been fortunate enough to be elected to these councils and I have raised on numerous occasions. And one of those things has been sort of put me in that position is the Good Governance Guide from the local government in Tasmania. And when you look at the eight principles of the main characteristics of good governance, number one is good governance is accountable. Accountability is the fundamental requirement of good governance. Local government has an obligation to report, to explain and to be answerable for the consequences of decisions it has made on behalf of the community it represents and serves. Point number two, good governance is transparent. People should be able to follow and understand the decision-making process. This means that they are able to clearly see how my decisions was made, what information and advice and consultation can council consider, a council consider, and which legislative requirements, when relevant, council followed. I think that's something that this council previously, previous council may have struggled with. Hence the reason why we're in a situation and having this conversation now. Point number five, good governance is equitable. The community's wellbeing depends on all its members feeling that their interests have been considered by their council in the decision-making process. All groups, particularly the most vulnerable, should have opportunities to participate in the decision-making process and all groups should be treated equally by their council. I think the process that we've undertaken to get to the point that we are at the moment has been a long one and I welcome and I encourage my fellow councillors to support the recommendation as it sits.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Mayor.
Councillor Ennis.
Yeah, I'll be fully supporting this motion and as you can see with the recommendation, we have seven recommendations listed on there. As councillor Ennis suggested, unfairly against the council as well and I'll be drawing my own so far. I think this is one area that we can improve on and we can see that improvement. I think these implications will definitely work better for everyone involved and definitely for the rate payers. Also, I noticed in the minute series that there was a meeting with some rate payers as well, with you, Madam Mayor and the general manager, which is great to see that council is trying to move forward and do their best when decisions are being made. These changes will evolve council and I think that will be a much easier and better place for everyone. I'll be very comfortable with the recommendations of having put towards council. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Thank you. I'll support the motion. It's a good motion, but I would just like to say as somebody who's been on previous councils that this council's never tried to hide anything. It's been what it's been. We've always been open and transparent. It's not just a new buzzword around town. It's part of, it's been around our local government, so rules and regulations and that's what we do. With what councillor Letty O'has just said, that's true. Good to have meetings with the mayor and the general manager and the general rate payer. Once again, that's standard practice and most of their days when they're not doing other things, that's what they're doing. They're meeting with people like that. So I have no, I won't take anyone saying that we've done anything wrong in the past and I honestly believe we've done it as we needed to do it and I'm very proud of the way that council have operated. But as I said, I'm more than happy to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Councillor John, your voice.
Thank you, Madam. I think what we're looking at now is we just need to build trust again and...
I think what we're looking at now is we just need to build trust again and... So if it's a full charge, how long is it normally taken roughly?
Three weeks.
Through you there. Depends on the vehicle, depends on the capacity of the vehicle. Somewhere up to an hour and a half. Depends on the specifications in particular.
So at the most, if they're already getting half an hour free, say there's another hour, how much do they have? Brad car park at one. They'd have to pay a dollar fifty extra if they were charging for it. Because that will be the criticism we get. Oh, that'd be right, councillors are asking us to use their multi-story car parks or something. That's what's going to come out, that's what they're going to say. So we need to put out the facts. So if you're using this and you've got an electric car and you're going to be charging, it's going to cost you a dollar fifty at the most, extra, if you're using charger, if your car is needing to do the full charge. I think that's not so bad. Yeah, dollar fifty. So that's not so bad. I think that's if we point that out and make it very clear, people are going to understand. It makes sense when we're doing it for lots of reasons. It's all put into the report, so that makes sense. Thank you. Any other questions?
I was just going to support councillor John. It's a small price to pay for producing carbon footprint and, you know, I think you can afford it by, yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Any other comments? Council Lakeop? Council Lakeop?
Thank you. I think dollar fifty is a small price to pay as councillor Murphy's just said, particularly when you're undercover. You don't have to do it out. So I think the location was an excellent choice because that's better than being out in the wet, isn't it?
Thank you. Council Perry.
Thanks, Mayor Perry. And also to that point, based on discussions with electric highways in Tasmania, the preferred site to install and charge is a modern day car park. So obviously that's a preferred site for them as well. I've just asked, so that makes sense.
Thank you. Council Ennis.
It might be the first for the city and I'm sure there'll be plenty more in the future. And this will be the start, just making sure that there's an opportunity for people to progress with the charging of their cars around the place and this will be the first one, but it might be the last.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Council Akos, you have a question.
As the press goes out for this, we'll have been pointed out in the press release that that's the same in high bar and all system car parks.
I get one more. Thank you. Council Let'son.
Thanks, Mayor Medley. I notice in the report there we did have three options, there was option A, B and C. And I'll be supporting the option A, which is, I think, the best way to go. We definitely need a recharge station. The location's going to be great for Devonport. And it's going to be owned by NHC, so I'll be fully responsible for the upkeep of the units. Thank you.
Thank you. That's the lower part.
Thank you everyone for their support and their comments there. Must remember too that it's great that tourism must be, borders open back up and we have tourists coming over, getting off the spirit, wanting to charge their cars up first thing in the morning. Hopefully we'll encourage them to come into the city for a few hours and before they're at home to do a recharge. So we're not just taking the drivers here, but consider it close. Thank you. Motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried in and on the seat. Item 5.7, it's the General Cemetery Master Plan for 2021 to 31. Obviously lots of interest and we have a report on that master consultation. John, put in place. You do, ma'am.
Thank you, Council Lakeop. John the Second.
So you do.
Thank you, Council Murphy. Council Lakeop.
Thank you, ma'am. It's good that we've got to this point. We're ready to adopt this master plan. It's all the work that seems to have been done by the general public, but it's all been mercy bound. So it's nice that people now can see and they've been consulted in various ways for the General Cemetery Master Plan. It was interesting, some comments about having to pass through their general track. A lot of them have come back to me and said, oh, we don't want that, but that's been covered. And of course, there were some comments about some more trees. That could be some, another area where we can plant some more trees in Devonport. But I think it's good, especially in this day and age, we need to help people that are looking for their ancestry and I've been through that process and it's very difficult in some, well, I haven't actually looked any in Devonport, I might add, but out of town and to find your way around some cemeteries. So signage is also very essential as to what's where. But I think this is great. It's a good step forward and it shows that we're looking after our heritage and our ancestors here in Devonport. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Murphy.
Thank you, ma'am. I agree highly with councillor Lakeop there. It's been a long time coming. So a lot of work put into this particular master plan. I think it does exactly what it needs to do. And I look forward to seeing it adopted and then quickly.
Thank you. Council John.
Thank you. Look, I just think it's lovely to know that we haven't forgotten the cemetery up there, the old cemeteries people bought. I've got the right one this time. And I suppose what we've been doing out of the sprain, the new cemetery as they call it too. It's beautiful. We've done a lot of work out there. We've kind of been concentrating on there. So it's nice to know that we're going back to the old cemetery and making sure that it's looked after and putting it out to the community to allow them at their stay. I do one question though. How are we addressing? The question was that say there's 1,800 names there, but there's possibly 3,400 people buried there. That's a bit confusing. Mrs. Skirving?
Through you, ma'am. I think the content that went out, the 1,800 view was incorrect.
Right.
That was just background information in terms of the master plan content. So certainly action 1.4, a part of the master plan proposal is ongoing, updated that digital information. And there's also signage proposed as part of this. So I think there was an estimate of between 5,000 and 6,000. Our records show at the moment 3,400 variables. It is possible that there are some unmarked variables there as well and probably likely. That's difficult for councils to ascertain the absolute data around that, but it is partly ongoing action to always be upgrading, improving that digital information.
Which shows how important it is for having that many people that have been there. That's incredible, I mean. So, yeah, and well done. Because it's really lovely to be able to allow the community to have a process where they can have this, say, council staff have addressed every single one of those queries, which is great. People know they've been taken seriously. That's nice for the people they're helping for. Well done. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Council Lakeop, flowers.
Consider it closed, ma'am.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Any against? Motion's carried in and on the seat. Item 5.8 is the establishment of new lease agreements for the recent update, speech and a copy of the recommended lease template. Do you have a role of the recommendation, please?
So I move.
Council Perry, John the Second.
So you do.
Council Murphy, thank you. Council Perry.
Thanks, Mayor Medley. This clearly, given some recent issues, is a good step, the right direction. If you go through the lease template, the document that was the attachment attached to the report, it's very comprehensive, 61 pages long, which in my experience is quite extensive for this. But I guess we're not taking any chances. We're trying to cover all bases going forward. So that any arrangements made in private all place are solid, on solid ground and we retain the right to advertise over the premises or for the facility in giving you any sort of chances of later rights in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Council Murphy.
Yeah, I agree with councillor Perry yet again. I think it's been a long time coming in light of the 2019 York General Report. I think the document goes a long way if anything is right. Having said that, there are a couple of questions in relation to three particular items. The most important one is the lease template. It doesn't provide any provision for the declaration or what the rates in relation to payment rates. Were there those? Sorry, sorry for your talking. My apologies. With respect to the outgoings, where does the rates through you now to Mrs. Skirving?
Thank you, Mrs. Skirving.
So through you there, as part of the retail tenancy code practice for the state, there's a separate disclosure statement that will be included as part of the lease document for all leases of the premises. So the template lease document is effectively being established to, I guess, consistently apply lease terms across all of the tenancies of private all place. The disclosure statement in terms of specific lease proposal will be prepared for each individual lease presided council. In addition to that, the lease document also has specific schedules at the rear, which will be your each individual tenancy's particular circumstances. So each tenancy, for example, has different footprint in terms of an outdoor dining area to be allocated to it. Effectively, we're seeking to keep the lease document as consistent as possible across all tenancies. And that disclosure statement is the document that some of the terms do translate into the schedule at the front of the lease. But that disclosure statement is a prescribed for document which becomes part of, attached to the lease document as well.
Thank you. And the other two questions I had are in relation to 5.8, sorry, 8.1 in the 8.1B. And my question there is in relation to has a recent audit been completed and do we have a copy of such audit? And it relates to the council own equipment. And 8.3 of the document, does that particular clause in relation to responsibility of fit outs?
Thank you, Mrs. Skirving.
Through you, ma'am. So in terms of the current tenancies, an audit has been undertaken on the inventory for Tennessee 2. As part of the process that council has been undertaking there, there is limited council property associated with some of the other tenancies. I'm not aware of a rest of it, it's been held by the law. And the provision for fit out doesn't form part of that consideration. Thank you.
Thank you. Council John.
Thank you. So you've covered my first question. Thank you, Mr. Skirving, through you there. I was asking about rights and partnerships in session, so that would be helpful disclosure statement depending on the tenancy of the dinner. So that's great. On page 33, I just have a question on the subletting. How much control do we have over that? I see what's written there, but do we have a say in, say, things can happen in the time that I do rentals and I know it's not like commercials, but I did do commercials as well. You can have a circumstance where you take on a tenant, whether it's subletted or not, and then that person's circumstances can change. They may have a whole different realm to deal with. It could be, when you come into residence, it could be a divorce. So you're dealing with a husband and wife and then all of a sudden the wife's left in that tenancy, the husband's gone and then the wife can't meet the rent because of the circumstances. It's an awful situation, but you've got this where you can't help what's happened. Landlord's left high and dry because the circumstances have changed. So how much do we have a say against being open and transparent and trying to look after these tenancies that can become difficult? How much control do we have in assignment?
So through you, ma'am, two parts to the response. And I think there's an overlap there in terms of the question between subletting and assignment. So with the new lease document, we've explicitly written in the necessity for absolute consent for any subletting. So with the new lease document, we've explicitly written in the necessity for absolute consent for any subletting. Details in terms of the proposed sublease agreement need to be presented to councils in consideration. Changes to leasehold agreements, including subtenancies if they've been approved. Councilors are not unreasonable withhold assignment requests. There are a number of matters that council can have regard to, which is spelled out in the lease document in terms of the suitability of parties to take on an existing lease agreement. But the overarching provision required of councillors to not unreasonably withhold consent for assignment, particularly where assignees have demonstrated the capacity to continue with the existing lease agreement.
Oh, thank you. That's just giving clarity looking to it. Thank you. And my last one, again to Mrs. Currie. Page 34, it's just a simple question. It's saying shares on Australian, if the tenant is a company whose shares are not listed on an Australian stock exchange. So what if they are?
Through you, ma'am. So listed companies have reporting obligations to the assets. Not if there's a challenging ownership, they need to make that public.
So they're under that rule? Thank you. Nothing better.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Councilor John, would you?
I'm sorry.
Councilor Perry, the pollers?
Thanks, Mayor. Thanks for the questions and thank you for the answers you've given on Central College.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6, work information. And item 6.1 is workshops and roofing sessions held since the last council meeting. John the mover, please.
I see.
Councilor Murphy, John the Second, you do. Councilor Lecock, thank you. Councilor?
Thank you, ma'am. It's obviously a busy period, sort of coming out of Covid and this, but it's a busy procedure.
Thank you. Councilor Lecock?
All I can say is they were all very good workshops and roofing sessions, very interesting. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments, questions? Councilor Perry, the pollers?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.2 is the mayor's report.
Consider it moved.
Thank you. Councilor Lecock? The second one?
Second.
Councilor Murphy? Councilor Lecock?
Nothing to add apart from you're busy as usual, even though we're still in semi-lockdown. Just give up the good work, ma'am.
Thank you. Councilor Murphy?
Yes, ma'am. Good to see you getting your business back in the end, so that's good.
Thank you. I think. Are there any other comments, questions? Councilor Lecock, the pollers?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.3 is the general manager's report for July. Do you want to move it, please?
It's a move.
Councilor Perry, the second? Councilor Alexia, Councilor Perry?
Yet again, comprehensive in some of the restrictions or limitations that have been put upon us in recent months. So good work from the general manager. I just have one question, but the general manager may be representing for the North Road Club in relation to update on the the North Sea War. What's the feeling with that at the moment, general manager? Are they still confident that this thing can get off the ground? Or is that confidence in your mind stage is subsided?
Yeah, through you, ma'am. There's certainly still some challenges that the club are working through, so that was something that they wanted to sort of enforce on. They've not explained on a workshop setting. I guess the other thing that they was interested in, an update from the recent workshop that council had with representatives from six rivers. And we briefed on that workshop since that occurred, so we were able to update on that. And I guess the third reason for the meeting was just an opportunity to introduce Mrs. Currie to the club members, given that you're likely to be going forward. But having to provide all you found out in a workshop.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the floor.
Thank you. Councilor Alexia?
Yeah, the general manager's been very busy. Given this COVID pandemic happening, he's took quite a few different information out of where he's been, what he's been doing. And it's been a busy time, I gather, in the office. And people are going to ask that much, well done.
Thank you. Are there any other comments or questions? Councilor Perry, the pollers?
Consider it closed.
Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.4 is the governance and finance report for May and June. Do you want to move on that report, please?
It's a move.
Councilor Holston, John the Second, the second? Councilor Llebleau, Councilor Holston?
It's all with the report. Question, how are we going with our capitalisation of all our works? Something new up for them.
It's the general manager. But the process, I guess.
Yeah, it's through you, ma'am. Certainly there's a process beginning here. There's a bit of catch-up, I guess, from the year, and we're sort of running a bit of that at the moment. It's part of doing financial statements for the end of the year. We've got a reasonable system in place to see if we can capitalise that completely.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Llebleau. Nothing better. Any other comments or questions? Councilor John?
Thank you. Just a quick one, through you, also. What's about social media?
For us, a question?
Sure.
The manager can assign it.
How much are we getting out of Twitter? My place is amazing. I've seen it go from strength to strength since we started, and that's such a great tool. But are we using Twitter much? Is it worth our while? Should we be relooking at that, rejigging it? I don't know.
Thank you. I might ask the sovereigns to make any comments you might like to make on this.
Thank you, ma'am. Through you. We use the Twitter account to release media releases to our media contacts, and that's our main use at the moment. So it doesn't get a lot of use outside of that.
Fair enough. Thank you. I was just wondering.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? Councilor Murphy?
Yeah, just through you to probably the general manager, ma'am. The transfer to fragrance group on 25th of the sixth, the lane to the hotel side. The week before, it's on the 29th of the year. But it just has here, it's in the report, it's on the 25th. So I'm led to believe it was the 29th, but that's the reason for the question, because in the report it says 25th.
No, it was definitely 29th.
Too many, ma'am, that report could go wrong.
Page, Councilor?
On page, I can't remember, did you get that up here? Page 58. Transfer DCC fragrance has a different port product from the 25th to the 6th.
Yes, through you, ma'am. So that was the date the common seal got applied. So that registry is actually, when the document's been signed under seal, the contract didn't settle to 29th, but the seal was applied on that date, which is the 25th.
Which is the first, is that common practice when it hasn't settled to actually do that? Call us with the comments.
Correct. That's one of the steps that need to be executed before the money was finally transferred in the settlement.
Yeah, true.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments, questions? I guess there was still a stark reminder of the income that we had to forego for parking during the period of time that we decided to allow parking to be free. There's a very stark reminder there of the differences between May and June this year, May and June 2029. That was a decision we made, and I'm sure there's some regrets around that, and we'll work through it. I will ask Councilor Holston to close the dynamic, thank you.
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.5 is community services report. So, move it, please.
It's a move.
Mr. John, John the Second?
It's a move.
Councilor Alexia, thank you. Councilor John?
Yeah, always a good read. What a difference for the staff, hoping during a very interesting time with all the different things that we normally do. Big congratulations about the Wellness Wednesdays. I looked forward to it every weekend, all of a sudden. It was a really good staff initiative to make that something so important. And I loved sharing it, and it was a really good read every time. A lot of thought put into it. Also, I really enjoyed listening to Marie Bredzinski the other day on radio about jazz and what she's doing there. She's kind of rejigging about, okay, we can't have jazz this year, so let's look at what we've done. It's been a great, again, it's evolved, it's become iconic for Devonport. It's a really great time. I can't wait to see the Yellow Scarves out again. Quite a shame we couldn't do it this year, but we know what we'll do, we'll bring it back, and it'll be bigger and better than ever. And I'm sure everyone will be waiting, seeing what will be your two-year hiatus before it's back. And it's just been really, really, again, interesting to see the staff, to think our club is where, do things differently as other people have done. And it's been quite enjoyable. I'm sure it's been an interesting time for the staff. And just congratulations to all on parking everywhere. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Alexia?
Yeah, of course. What the Councilor John has commented, I think this COVID-19 period has been, as you can see in the report, a lot of the community events have been cancelled due to COVID-19. But it is a great opportunity now, it's the time to reset everything and relook at things and revisit things and, yeah, credit to it, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Holston?
There's a guy who said, right, I guess today, it was a good interview, it was Murray Bredzinski from the Jazz, who was on there for quite some time. I mean, I don't know, might have been half an hour or so. So it was very good.
Very good. Any other comments, questions? Councilor Alex?
Yeah, Are You Okay Day? I think is going to be something of some real value for the community. I think it's going to be an opportunity potentially to celebrate the achievement of not only the communities made, but the state under the leadership of the Premier and his team. I think it's going to be a valuable thing to see, and I think we should get rolling behind it and make it something really worthwhile.
Thank you. I'm aware that staff have got planning well underway, and I'm sure that we'll get up there as soon as we can. And how we can, as councillors, can contribute. I agree with you, Councilor, it's been a difficult time for lots of people, and I think this would be a good place to celebrate sunshine coming and just check in on our mates. So thank you for that. Any other comments, questions? I guess I just want to, not only the community services team, but all the team have worked so hard over the last few months. And I just want to thank them all for that, that we've continued on, both the indoor team and the outdoor team that have worked either differently or continued on, and so credit to them and our senior team that have been able to do that and have continued to do it for our communities. So thank you very much. Councilor John, the pollers?
I saw on Facebook this morning that they're saying parents want to use it as an excuse, Santa's going to be cancelled, we're not going to have Christmas. I don't believe that for a second. We're still going to have Christmas, we're still going to have events to look forward to. We've just got to be sensible in our approach. And again, I'm sure that everything we get to do finally, we're just going to make it bigger and better the last time. So look forward to seeing what we've got. Thank you. Consider it closed.
I'm sure Santa will be like this, and have permission to come.
That's right.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Well, never mind. Item 6.6 is the art convention report for May and June. Do you want to have a move, please?
It's a move.
Councilor Alexia? I'd be sick of that news. Lecock, thank you. Councilor Alexia?
Yeah, again, same sort of situation during COVID-19, pandemic happening in Jeff and his team. They know she worked so very hard behind the scenes. And one thing I picked up on there was, I was where the Aries, which is a great initiative. And it's good to say that you just have to think outside the box in what you can do and what you can hold the public with. It's quite impressive. Just a great job there.
Thank you. Councilor Lecock?
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, it is a good report. Thank you, Mr. Doxson. I just very enjoyed seeing what's been put on social media from the Best Australia time. That's been really good, considering all the things that's happening. And with the collection management and auditing through Lawrence Drive, it made me realise that some of our newer ordermen haven't had a look through that facility. I could be wrong, but I'm thinking that much of the time that they go up and have a look because it's a really great facility for that type of storage. So just that I'll take that opportunity to mention it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor John?
I just want to say that we're open for business. Art gallery's reopened. I'm sure we'll definitely be back by the moment, which is called the Arts Centre. I think what we just need to do is tell everybody, look after yourselves and look after our locals. Come back to everything that's opening their doors and revisit things that perhaps you haven't visited before, the library's open. Just get down and see everything that's opening and support everything because we've been closed. Everyone's moaning about sitting at home doing nothing, you've got lots to do now. So I think we ought to just reimagine what we've got that's open and going to have a look at all and support it and do the right thing.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Alexia, to close?
Consider it closed.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
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 Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.7 is our convertible minutes of the Devon City Council order panel meeting of the 9th June. Do you want to move it, please?
It's a move.
Councilor Llebleau, John the Second?
It's a move.
Councilor Alexia, thank you. Councilor Llebleau. It's all in the report, helping fellow. Thank you. Councilor Alexia?
Thank you.
Any other comments, questions? Councilor Llebleau, to close. Consider it closed. Thank you. I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any against? Motion's carried unanimously. Item 6.8 is section 23 committees, and we have been in recess over the last recent months, and there's nothing to report there. It spins to an end in our open sections meeting. Can I have a move to enter class session, please?
It's a move.
Councilor Holston, John the Second?
I'll take it there.
Councilor Perry, thank you. Any comments?
No comments.
I'll put the motion, all eyes in favour, please say aye.
Aye.
Against? Motion's carried unanimously. Thank you. And I'd like to welcome the gentleman back after a break.
Okay, thank you.